Okay, good evening everyone, it's showtime. Welcome to the 5:00 PM meeting, the June 21st meeting, a regular meeting of the Flagler County Board of County Commissioners. I'm going to call the meeting to order and ask that you join us in a pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And as we do at the start of each one of our meetings, we ask that you join us in a moment of silence as we think about, remember, and pray for all of the first responders here in Flagler County, the brave men and women of our Sheriff's Department, all the other police forces that protect us in service here in Flagler County, our first responders, our fire rescue services, and of course, and we can never forget, the brave men and women of the United States military that keep us safe both here and abroad. So please join us in a moment of silence. Thank you. Okay. So, first off on the agenda, we need to take care of some business with some additions and deletions and modifications to the agenda. First up is, at the request of the clerk, for some scheduling issues and to accommodate a number of items, we're asking that we move item 8A to item 3, right, following announcements by the chair here, so we can work on that item. So I would entertain a motion on that, Commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we move item 8A in the agenda and move it to, we'll call it 3'.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. None opposed, that motion carries, thank you. We also have a request for, to delete item 8C, which is entitled Pavement Management Report Presentation, some issues with the consultant being able to attend today, so we'll put that back to a future meeting, move that forward, so would request a motion on that.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we delete item 8C from the agenda and move it to the next meeting.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and then the last is an addition of an item which is entitled an inter-local agreement between Flagler County and the City of Palm Coast regarding the Marin Land Acres Drainage and Roadway Improvement Project. We did get a copy of that inter-local agreement in our email, but it was finalized late on Friday, so staff seeking to keep that moving forward, but to add it to the agenda, and I suggest we do that as item 8E.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we move the inter-local agreement between Palm Coast and Flagler County regarding drainage system in the Malacopa area to item 8E.
Have a second on that, gentlemen?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. None opposed, that motion carries unanimously, thank you. I think that handles it for our changes to the agenda. Just a couple of announcements from the chair. As a reminder, please remember to join us on July the 3rd for our annual Freedom Fest Flagler, which will be held at the Flagler Executive Airport, and that'll be from 10:00 AM to 9:00 PM, emissions-free. And you can find more information, I'm sure, on our website, and that's a good time, and encourage everyone to come out and do that. Our airport director, Roy Seeger, does a fabulous job, him and his team, in putting that all on together, and we sure appreciate that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Just a point on that. I read today, I just want to make sure we're all synced on that, the opening ceremonies are going to be at 12:00, and I think they indicate that the Commissioners kind of expected to be there.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All right. Also, an announcement that the county offices will be closed on Friday, July 2nd, and Monday, July the 5th, in observance of Independence Day for us. And then the next regularly scheduled commission meeting is scheduled for Monday, July the 12th, which is 9:00 AM, and a reminder that that is the only regularly scheduled meeting that we'll have in July. There is a workshop also scheduled for July 12th at 1:00 PM. So that takes care of announcements. And next up, we'll move to the item 3', which is, let me just read that. That is a presentation and acceptance of the comprehensive annual finance report for Flagler County's Board of County Commissioners and our constitutional officers for the fiscal year ending September 30th, 2020. And I'm proud to say we got that done on time before June the 30th, and would call upon the clerk, I guess, to introduce this item. Or are you doing that, Mr. Cameron?
I would not be doing that, the clerk is coming forward.
Yeah, all right, Mr. Clerk, welcome, and thank you.
Good evening, Tom Bexley, Clerk and Comptroller. We're going to, I'm going to ask your outside auditors that you contract on behalf of the county to come up tonight and present the audited financials, representatives from CRI.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, thank you, Mr. Chairman, rest of the board, for the opportunity to present here tonight the results of our audit for the fiscal year 1920. I was told right before the meeting started that a copy of those financial statements were emailed to your, emailed late this afternoon, so the page numbers I'm reading are from that packet.
You have to introduce yourself.
I'm sorry, I'm Brett Stone, Carwigs and Ingram, manager, Frank Mason, engagement partner, also CRI.
Thank you.
Page 194 of the financial statements is a summary of your fiscal year 1920 audit results, including opinions on the financial statements and major federal programs and state projects, which were all unmodified clean opinions. Clean opinions were issued for the governmental activities, business-type activities, each of the three major funds, the general fund, the airport fund, and the utility funds, and the aggregate remaining funds. Also, in the summary, we reported that there was one weakness in controls found, which resulted in a finding that is included on page 195. The findings from the prior year were corrected, as noted at the bottom of that page. Flipping back to 194, the summary lists the two major federal programs and three state projects that we audited. It also mentions the county did not qualify as a low-risk auditee under criteria of federal uniform guidance, this is a result of late filing two years ago. Our annual reports, required by the rules of the Auditor General, start on page 198. First is the management letter. We are required to assess the financial condition of the county as of the end of the fiscal year. We determined you did not meet the definition of experiencing a financial emergency or deteriorating financial condition as defined in the Florida statutes. Additionally, based on your 2020 expenditures, the available unassigned and assigned general fund balances are sufficient to cover approximately 4.1 months of general operating expenditures in the following year. This is compared to just 1.5 months of coverage in the prior year, and the GFOA recommendation is two months. We're also required by the state to comment on whether any prior findings have been corrected. As noted earlier, in the prior year, there were two findings, and both of those were corrected in the current year. Page 200 relates to our testing of compliance with Florida Statute Section 218.415 regarding investments. We did not note any material noncompliance. As such, we reported, in our opinion, the county complied in all material respects with the statute. Our final page, our report is on page 201. This report is also required by the state, which tests the county's compliance with certain sections of Florida Statutes, Chapter 365, regarding authorized expenditures and uses of E911 funds. Again, we found no material noncompliance, and our report states, in our opinion, the county complied in all material respects with these statutes. And that concludes our summary, and we'd be happy to take any questions.
You mentioned that you had one finding, but then you didn't expand on that. What was the one weakness?
So, there was one journal entry that we uncovered, that was a material, it was basically the incorrect account was chosen in the, in journal entry, and we uncovered it in audit procedures, and the journal entry was subsequently corrected, but because it was caught in our audit procedures, it's listed as a weakness.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
We just, I just look, and we, this came in to us at 4:21 PM this afternoon, so we really haven't had a chance to look at it in detail, but it sounds like everything is pretty shipshape. You notice they're not effusive with their comments about how good we are.
There's 200 pages of goodness expressed in our reports.
Commissioner Danz?
Was this time-sensitive, that it be on today's?
Yes.
Always, okay.
And I did attend the exit conference on Friday, on our behalf, and would, you know, just like to reiterate some of the conversation we had, which is, there has been really awesome teamwork between the clerk's office and our staff, and real proud of the fact that we can bring this in on time, which was by June the 30th, correct?
That's correct.
Just so everybody understands that, and it's the first time we've done that in a long time, I guess.
We did last year.
We did last year, but before that, it had been a number of years.
Took a special meeting last year to get there.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. And it seems that it's always right on the margin, Commissioner Danz, in terms of these things coming in right at, right at the end, because they have such a volume of a lot of counties and municipalities they're working with.
And I'm not object to having, on an annual basis, a special meeting just for this, if it makes it life easier on everybody that's putting it together.
Yeah, and staff and the clerk's office are already on a plan to even improve the timing next year as well, from what I remember from the exit conference. But again, can't thank you enough, Mr. Bexley, for the teamwork and helping to drive the process, and we're real pleased with the results, and will, obviously will, will make sure that we keep improving as best we can. So, anything else, Commissioners?
Thank you all.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Clerk, on this?
Yeah, just a couple of things. First, I wanted to thank Mr. Cameron, Mr. Bauer, the people that you have working with you and for you are superior, we appreciate the partnership there. Also, a lot of people don't realize that the other constitutional officers are involved in the countywide audit, and I wanted to thank all of them personally for the great work that their financial staff's put into it. I see the sheriffs here, thank you very much, sir, you're definitely the biggest and most difficult, other than the board, of course, and came through very well, so, thank you and congratulate. And one more thing, and this is going to embarrass her, but I can't help myself. Our CFO acts as the comptroller on my behalf and handles the financials. There's one person from my office, she's here tonight, her name's Claudia Buckles, and without her, this would not have gotten done. She was sitting in her office, literally, 10, 15 minutes ago, putting it together and making sure you had a copy, so I wanted to acknowledge her, and she is absolutely our rock star. Thank you so much, and thank you, Board.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clerk, and Mr. Cameron, you.
Yes, sir. I think that this stellar audit report is made much more phenomenal by the fact that it occurred during the year of COVID, when we were involved in the carers' money distribution, and we literally dumped an avalanche of transactions on the clerk's office. When you start distributing millions of dollars, $1,000 at a time, it greatly increases that, and the fact that we had to avoid having that money clawed back because we did it wrong put an extra burden on them, and for us to come out with this audit on time is really phenomenal, when you look at that extra load that we had, plus that we dumped onto the clerk's office.
Thank you, sir. Well, with that, I'll entertain a motion on this item.
Make a motion to accept the audit report.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we need to have public comment on that, Mr. Attorney?
No, it's not, it's not an action where you have to have public comment.
Okay, all right. So I'll call a question, all those in favor of the motion to accept the annual audit, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Here and none, that motion carries unanimously. Thank you to all. All right, let's see. So we'll move on to recognitions, proclamations, and presentations, and first up is a recognition of our 2021 Flagler County Leadership Graduates, and I know Mr. Cameron is going to take us
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It is a real pleasure, it's beyond a pleasure, it's probably the high point of what I do here, when we graduate a leadership class. This has been an incredible class. It is a class that studies the very foundations of leadership and what it means. This is the first book that they were assigned, they were assigned many books during this. In fact, they leave with a leadership library, but this is called a motive, and we put it first because you really need to examine why you want to be a leader. I'm going to read you one short page out of this. And it's called Exploring the Two Leadership Motives: Reward-Centered Leadership and Responsibility-Centered Leadership. Reward-centered leadership is the belief that being a leader is the reward for hard work. Therefore, the experience of being a leader should be pleasant and enjoyable, free to choose what they want to work on, and avoiding anything mundane, unpleasant, or uncomfortable. I can assure you from personal experience that that's not what leadership is about. The other responsibility-centered leadership, the belief that being a leader is a responsibility. Therefore, the experience of leading should be difficult and challenging, though certainly not without elements of personal gratification. No leader is purely reward-centered or responsibility-centered. We all struggle at times, and we all rise up to do the right thing at times, but one of these two motives for leadership will be predominant, and that motive will have a profound impact on the success of the leader and the organization he or she serves. All through this course, we do everything that we can to imprint that indelibly on the minds of those that choose to be leaders. And we give them the tools, and we introduce them to millennial, millennia-old concepts that have proved successful throughout history. And Dr. Saviak gives the most up-to-date tools to put in their quiver for any situation they may run into. It is indeed a pleasure to watch these folks grow in a rapid period of time, and it is indeed a pleasure to see the effects of their leadership on this organization and the benefit to the citizens of this county. And with that, I'd like to introduce the class of 2021. If you would stand. Dr. Saviak, would you come up and present the class one at a time? You may have a seat.
Thank you very much, Professor Cameron. For each of our graduates, this is a wonderful moment in your careers and your success, and it's just a very special time of celebration. You worked very hard, your talent, your dedication. It was rigorous and challenging, there was plenty of reading, there were demanding assignments, policy memo, case study analysis, and then all of you just did a fantastic job on the regional team problem, team problem-solving projects that you generated in class, so we're very proud of this day, we're very proud of you, the future is very bright for Flagler County local government, and grateful to Sheriff Staley, grateful to our tax collector, Suzanne Johnston, to the superintendent of schools, Kathy Middlestat, and all the community partners who made this success story possible. So, when I call your name, if you would, each graduate would please step forward, you'll be receiving your diploma from Chairman O'Brien and from Professor Cameron, and then you'll be stepping to the side and receiving your lapel pin as proud graduates of the Flagler County Leadership Academy. May we first have Mr. Matt Adams. Mr. Jordan Butler. This is Holly Durants. Oops, oh, thank you very much. Mr. Trevor Morton. Mr. Trevor Morton. Director Christina Mortimer. Mr. Michael Orlando. Mrs. Ashley Ulet. Ms. Darlene Pardini. She was unable to attend, but Ms. Titia Peterson. Give her a big round of applause. And then our next graduate is Tim Privat. That is Tim Privat, right there. I just gave you Tim Privat. Director Roy Seeger, please come forward. Mrs. Amy Kennedy Stroger, please come forward. And Mr. Jason Wheeler.
Thank you. And these guys did a whole lot of reading in a short period of time, lots and lots of books. But Flagler County will be served well decades to come because of the effort that they put in. Let's have a big hand for the Class of 21. All right, you may have your seats, and we're at the high point of the graduation. Oh, you want to, I thought you got that outside. Okay. This is, I consider the high point of the graduation is that the students themselves pick a valedictorian. Last week was, I mean, last year's, time flies when you're married. Last year's was, Shelly Grossman from the Clerk's Office did an outstanding job. People still talk about it. This year, the class unanimously selected Nealon Joseph. These guys prepare for months for this speech, and I think you will enjoy it. Nealon? We're very proud of Nealon.
Good evening. First of all, I'd like to say that the only reason why I'm up here is because it was a surefire way that none of them would have to give a speech. Over the last several months, my fellow classmates and I have undergone a rigorous program that has challenged us both personally and professionally. The goal of this program is very simple, to develop future leaders and professionals, to invest in the dedicated public servants of Flagler County, and to provide them with the tools necessary to be successful. Today, not only have we successfully completed this mentally demanding program, but we've also pushed ourselves to be better than we previously thought possible. During our program, we were asked to contemplate leadership. What does it mean to be a leader? To answer this question, we did three important things: read, understand, and embrace. First, we read it. Since September 2020, we've read the words of Patrick Lencioni, John C. Maxwell, Admiral William H. McRaven, Jim Collins, and other leadership and management experts. Eight assigned books to read, 1,871 pages, over 420,000 words. And we read them all. Next, we understood it, reflected on the lessons to gain a deeper understanding of what we had read. We now understand that a leadership position is not for hard work or years of service. Leadership requires dedication to a vision other than your own personal goals. We now understand that the standard set by a leader is the basis for a culture an organization must have to be healthy and successful. We now understand the importance of swift conflict resolution. Growth and success are stifled by a persnickety team that cannot work together. We now understand, in order to be effective leaders, we must move from the ground level of five feet and see the bigger picture at 50,000 feet. We cannot fall back into what's comfortable and focus on what we knew. We must elevate ourselves higher and trust our team to do their job. And if our team is not prepared to do that, then it is on us to change it. Finally, we embraced it. We've taken these lessons and applied it both to our personal and professional lives. As a result, we have already, as Professor Cameron would instruct, gone forth and done great things. While in this program, one of us completed a master's degree program. One of us was recognized for actions taken while battling wildfires during a deployment. One of us stepped into the role of interim fire chief, effectively maintaining the department while enabling a smooth transition for the incoming chief. One of us was promoted to a managerial position. One of us has been selected to be an assistant branch director for the new Tax Collector Office branch. One of us put together a proposal that will now see the renovation and expansion of one of our public buildings, which will positively impact community services. Two of us earned critical certifications in our respective fields. Several of us collaborated on the development of new technological applications and programs that have made departments more efficient, provided information to our residents, and assisted with the safety and security of the county. And all of us have dealt with the added stress of adapting to what we hope is a once-in-a-generation pandemic. This academy has provided us with the opportunity to hone our skills as leaders in a constructive, nurturing, and educational environment, and we are better for it. Collectively, we are more effective speakers and presenters. We have been liberated of the paralyzing fears some of us once faced from the mere thought of public speaking. We now have the experience necessary to put forth recommendations for programs and processes we feel will be beneficial to our organizations. We have the tools and confidence necessary to lead a team while instilling the vision and culture our organizations are striving to meet. We have learned that we cannot simply be yes men or women. We have learned and reinforced the notion, to be successful, we must foster teamwork by building strong relationships within our team. Finally, we learned to answer the question posed to us at the start of a program. To be a leader means to sacrifice. It means putting needs of others, your organization, your community, over your personal wants and needs. As leaders, we must be honest. We must have empathy. We must be able to strategically prioritize the issues at hand. We must empower our team. And most of all, we must be ethical and trustworthy. On behalf of my fellow classmates, I wish to express our deepest gratitude to not only Professor Cameron and Professor Saviak, but to this board, the Sheriff's Office, Tax Collector's Office, School Board, and the community for your joint cooperation, support, and investment in the successful future of your team and our public servants. You are the embodiment of the academy's motto, achieving success through the success of others. Today, as we graduate as the second cohort of the county's Leadership Academy, we will not only continue to go forth and do great things, but for a healthy organization and a healthy culture within Flagler County, we will ensure others in our organization do the same. Thank you.
There you have it, Mr. Chairman. That is your future, and a bright one it is. When I see the performance of these folks and think about the things yet to come, I can't help but get a lump in my throat. It is truly a magnificent tribute to you and all that made this possible. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Cameron, and thank you, Neil. And that takes a lot of guts to do that, and well-prepared and well-delivered. Sure appreciate it, and proud of you. All right, speaking of lumps, Mr. Cameron, as the public may not be aware, today is the last public meeting that Mr. Cameron will be with us for. And so we, I, and I know my fellow commissioners feel the same way, felt it was appropriate that we did some public recognition. So, and it's appropriate that we do it right after that leadership graduation because that's something that Mr. Cameron started and put forward on his own and gave birth to it, and we're real proud of that. But we do want to thank you for the many contributions that you've made to the well-being of Flagler County. You've managed many complicated projects to success. And would you please come forward, Mr. Cameron, so I can embarrass you a little bit more? You financially secured our future by building up our financial reserves, as we heard here a little while ago, through tight fiscal management so that we can withstand future emergencies. You've built an esprit de corps among our employees and restored confidence in the county government from our citizens and cities. And perhaps most importantly, you've managed to accomplish these objectives during a worldwide pandemic, to say the least, and guided us safely through it. So I'm going to take a little poetic or management license here, and I'm going to read a recognition that we've put together of your time here. And I'm going to ask the public to bear with me because if I counted it right, it has 16 warehouses. So I'll try to go through them. And at the end, I would ask if my fellow commissioners agree with this, if they would sign it, and we would have that for you as sort of a permanent record of what you've accomplished here and our deep appreciation. So with that, I'm going to read this as recognition of County Administrator Jerry Cameron for his dedicated service to the citizens of Flagler County. Whereas Mr. Cameron has served Flagler County in the considerable duties of county administrator for the past two years and four months, and whereas during this time Administrator Cameron negotiated the COVID-19 global pandemic to protect the health and welfare of Flagler County, and whereas he guided the county's professional staff as they continued the business of local government and as they communicated timely information to our community, and whereas through Mr. Cameron's leadership, the county set up and managed testing sites and vaccination sites and administered critical financial assistance programs totaling $10 million in aid channeled to local municipalities, businesses, and residents, and lobbying for available federal funds and additional $22 million that were appropriated for the needs of Flagler County. And whereas despite the pandemic, Administrator Cameron has worked diligently and contributed greatly to the success of numerous projects important to Flagler County, such as the new ADA Accessible Bay Drive Park, the new Flagler County Sheriff's District Office facility, the 800 megahertz Public Safety Communication System, and the migration of the county's 911 system to the next-generation technology system, the partnership for a cold-weather shelter with Church on the Rock, including shelter and bus routes, the long-delayed parking expansion at the Government Service Building, the Community Reporting Act, UGov Flagler, the Marineland Acres Drainage Project, Dunes Renourishment Shore Up, the Shore Up Project, and the groundbreaking on the new Flagler County Sheriff's Operations Center. And I want to point out in the middle of this that if you go up into Mr. Cameron's office, he's got a big dry erase board, and the ink on it is actually fading because when he first started here, he listed all of these projects. And one by one, he's been just knocking them all off. And that was his mission, that's what you set out to do, and I think we're just about there. Whereas Administrator Cameron has also provided oversight of the sale and transition of sizable property assets, including wastewater and water utilities, Plantation Bay, Beverly Beach, and Eagle Lakes, and the former Moody Boulevard Sheriff's Operations Center, along with the Palm Coast Parkway Sears property. And whereas Administrator Cameron recognized, when he assumed the county administrator role, that the county was less than half of the recommended financial reserves that were needed for counties and required for counties, and thereby exposing the county to risks and additional costs and borrowing to continue the county's needed projects. And whereas through a combination of financial discipline, including managing operations revenue, improving budgeting, and more efficient operations, Administrator Cameron set the tone for the entire organization to achieve an ideal level of financial reserves. And we've also managed quite carefully our millage rate as a result of it. I'm adding that in. And whereas by achieving an improved level of financial reserves, Flagler County is better equipped to handle the fiscal needs of a coastal community needing available resources it can deploy in emergencies or to address other community needs. And whereas also as far as setting the tone for the county organization, Administrator Cameron has emphasized a service leadership culture and has championed the development of staff and a collaborative work environment, instilling leadership and esprit de corps that has aided in moving Flagler County consistently forward. And whereas Administrator Cameron developed, launched, and co-taught the rigorous curriculum of the Flagler County Leadership Academy, producing two graduating classes during his tenure, which, again, I'll remind you, was only two years and four months, and which will continue to cultivate those qualities of leadership that will distinguish the county in the future. And whereas County Administrator Cameron has provided well-reasoned and sustainable solutions to complicated land use disputes and demonstrated civility through all debate or on sometimes contentious issues before the county. And whereas he has provided a calming presence and a dry humor in his interactions and served as statesman for the county and his staff. And whereas the Flagler County Board of County Commissioners finds it appropriate to recognize Jerry Cameron and takes great pleasure in honoring his significant service and herewith expresses its sincere gratitude for the invaluable contributions he has made to Flagler County and its citizens. Now let it be known that Flagler County Board of County Commissioners do hereby recognize Mr. Jerry Cameron and expresses its sincere appreciation for his dedication and leadership in improving the lives of the citizens of Flagler County during his tenure. Signed this 21st day by myself and hopefully all my fellow commissioners. Mr. Cameron, I think that pretty much says it all. Okay. How about we wait and we'll do that? All right. Okay. Thank you, sir. All right. I will circulate that for signatures. Okay, we'll move on to our third item, which is a recognition of Mr. Jonathan Lord and his graduation from the FEMA National Emergency Management Advanced Academy. And Mr. Cameron, I think you're teeing this up as well, sir?
Yes, if Jonathan would come forward. This is just another example of one of our graduates that inherited or the spirit of self-improvement was inflamed by the Leadership Academy. And we recognize him on a periodic basis for his accomplishments and his certifications. And I'd like to have him explain what was involved with this new certification.
Thank you, Mr. Cameron. Thank you, commissioners. Jonathan Lord, Emergency Management Director. So actually, didn't expect to be recognized for this. I was just kind of sharing it with Mr. Cameron, then he stuck it on the agenda. Because that's how he is. I think you all have learned that already.
I thought if I were going to be embarrassed, you would be too.
So this is actually a program. It's typically a one-year program with multiple trips up to the FEMA National Academy up in Emmitsburg, Maryland, just a couple hours outside of DC. And I actually started this a few years ago, and it usually takes place over a year period. And I think actually 2015 or 14 is when I actually officially started. And then every time I tried to finish it and take the last week of the class, little things in my career popped up, such as hurricanes each time. So I'd actually kind of given up on this course, never thinking that I would ever get a chance to finish it because in my line of work, disasters are kind of going to happen, whether they happen here or happen somewhere else, we go to help. So I'd actually, I started thinking a little less about it, even though I really enjoyed the program. I really just had one week of a trip up to Emmitsburg to finish. And FEMA actually reached out to myself as well as, I think, a half dozen other people that had started the program. And for whatever reason, life happened, it's emergency management, lots of things happened, and couldn't finish things, saying, hey, even though COVID's messed up a lot of things, COVID actually is going to give us an opportunity to offer you a different way of completing the course, and would you like to complete the final week virtually? So I said, if I'm ever going to do it, this is the best time to do it. Ended up having to write a paper and do a week's worth of extra coursework in the midst of everything else going on. I just made it work. It's life. It was something important to me, and I was given a very good opportunity to do that. So I really appreciate FEMA offering me that opportunity, myself as well as, like I said, half a dozen other people. What this year-long course covers is things such as advanced concepts in emergency management, like recovery and interacting with communities that have been through significant disasters, as well as leaders from large local governments, as well as state governments and federal government levels in emergency management and other related emergency agencies. We talked through leadership, which very much well into the Leadership Academy that I attended last year and this year's class that just graduated. And we talked about where the future of FEMA is going. FEMA even uses this course as almost a think tank to help springboard ideas to help improve FEMA and the services it offers to our citizens. So it was a great opportunity to participate in those discussions. I learnt a lot from that. And at the end of the day, it really wasn't for me. It was, I really did it for my team and my community. While I gathered some knowledge, it's knowledge that I can just share readily with my team and our entire emergency management team, and learnt from other places that everywhere does something differently. It may not be right for us to do it one way, but they do it a different way, and it makes us say, hmm, that's interesting. So while I was the body in the class, I just really looked at it as a way of improving our EM program here in Flagler County. And I thank you all for the opportunity to be able to continue to do those kinds of things to help improve our services. So thank you.
Congratulations. Super. Okay, we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is the community outreach portion of our agenda. And I'll just read this and make sure everyone knows the ground rules here. This is a 30-minute time period allocated for public comment on any consent agenda item or topic not on the agenda. Each speaker will be allowed up to three minutes to address the commission. Speakers should approach the podium, identify themselves, and direct comments to the chair. And again, as I remind everyone, we run a civil meeting here, and I would hope that we respect those rules. All right, we're open.
Good evening. Through the chair, Jane Jin Tielu. May I give something to show my sincere thanks to Jerry Cameron? May I give it to him?
Yeah, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm not a very easy person to deal with, as everybody knows, including myself. I don't know how I'm approaching, my husband and I are approaching our 30th anniversary, the 52nd anniversary of the moon launch. We married at Kennedy Space Center. And we often ask ourselves why one of us didn't get set up with one of the rockets so the other one of us could live in peace. But Jerry Cameron has been the best thing that's ever happened, as far as I'm concerned as a citizen in Flagler County. He has answered every phone call, has put up with my emphatic requests on many, many different issues, two of them still not resolved as yet, but I won't get into them now. He's a very special person. He has every quality that I hope that we can find in someone else, but I doubt it. He's a saint. His office is full of books. I am sure that he learns something new every day. But what he has, more than anything, is compassion and understanding and respect. And Jerry, I will miss you. I'll miss the hell out of you. God bless you, Jerry. Bye.
All right, thank you, Ms. Yu. Any other speakers for community outreach?
I got to tell you.
Just introduce yourself, please.
My name is Ron, Ron Polley. I live in Palm Coast.
Yes, sir.
And I've lived here for a year and a half, lived here, moved from New Jersey, and have always been extremely impressed with the county, with Palm Coast and so forth. But tonight, I didn't expect this. This is wonderful. So anyhow, I feel it's a little beneath this meeting, actually, to ask for what I'm going to ask for, something very minor. We're a group of remote-controlled car enthusiasts, and we need a place to play with our toys. And you have a park, Wadsworth Park, that has a perfect little spot to dedicate for remote-controlled car use, like you have for the Rams, for the Airplane Club. And we're looking for a place to have some type of place to, whoops, sorry, where we can race the cars, have a little track and so forth. There's many, many places in Florida, all an hour and a half to two hours away from here. So there's nothing around here. I have talked to the TDC in regard to this, the Tourist Development Council. I think they would help with some things if you wanted to turn this. See, here's the thing. What I'm asking for is nothing more than a dedicated area to go play, a little plaque that says we can play. And we would use shovels and dig up and make a track and so forth. It wouldn't cost anything. But if you really want to go hog wild and turn this into a destination where people would travel hundreds of miles to come to, that's available too. But that's going to cost some serious money, you know, 100 grand or whatever, to build that type of facility. So it goes from here to up here. I don't know what the goals are of the county. I don't know what the goals or aspirations are of the Parks Commission, but this is a request. We do have a track that is down in Ormond. That's an oval track that is in a park area, but nothing is a road track facility. You know, so we end up running around in parking lots and being in the way, and, you know, we just need an area to go to, just like you've done for the Rams, which is wonderful. And, you know, that's a wonderful club. So anyhow, I brought a couple copies to hand out.
I'll make sure we get them distributed out. All right.
If this is of interest to the county, obviously I could put something together, much more elaborate pricing, you know, whatever you're interested in, if there's that interest level.
Well, at a minimum, we would want our Parks and Recs folks to talk with you. So if you could give Mr. Cameron your contact information, and we'll match you guys up and see if you can start some conversation on that.
Great. Thank you. Keep up the wonderful job.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
Hi, I'm Katherine Karpinski. I'm a school psychologist. I'm a board-certified behavior analyst, and I'm president of the Joy Advantage Counseling Services. Flagler County will get $22 million from the American Rescue Plan allocated by 2024. $500,000 is earmarked for expanding mental health therapy, and $300,000 is earmarked for mental health clinics. There is a mental health crisis in Flagler County. This was discussed in a special session in February, and it seems like the major disconnect was funding. We have an enormous opportunity with these funds from the American Rescue Plan, and the priorities of this community have to focus on the 16% of the population who is under Medicare. In 2020, 19,275 members, citizens of Flagler County were on Medicare, and there are zero psychiatrists available to serve them. We live in a mental health desert for those of us who are most vulnerable and most needy. The county has a wonderful opportunity with these funds to allocate some of these resources to what the community really needs. As discussed in the February meeting, a crisis response team is needed in the county to serve our most vulnerable members, as well as expansion of clinical options, whether that's through the $300,000 allocated in mental health clinics or working through the local hospital system. We need to expand mental health services for those who are on Medicaid. There's currently no available, no available mental health services when it comes to medication and follow-up. So if somebody in Flagler County is Baker acted and they're on Medicaid, they don't have the access to those kind of follow-up services. And if they do, they have to travel far. A family on Medicaid, if they have children with autism, it takes 18 months to get an appointment for a diagnosis. And 18 months is critical in early childhood development. These funds will make a world of difference to mental health services in our county, and I urge you to move forward with your plans made in that February meeting. Please fund the neighborhood crisis team. And I'd like to bring awareness to flaglerlifeline.org. Support for this website is a support for mental health services in the county. Flaglerlifeline.org provides resources for mental health services and suicide prevention in Flagler. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Katherine. Next speaker, please. Okay, seeing no one come forward, we'll close community outreach. And we will move on to item 5B, which is any board comments on consent agenda items that we're just want to comment on but not pull. Commissioner Dance.
On 7J, maybe Mr. Cameron could talk to it, but libraries have come a long way, and this agenda item details a lot about what's going into the library. But I know Mr. Cameron and I have talked about how the pandemic has also shaped what a library can become. And I know that that's being incorporated into the library. So if somebody could speak to that, I think it's important to understand how that's affecting things.
Mr. Chairman, would you like me to do that now?
Yes, sir, please.
The architect is following directions to try to give us what we call a prototypical library of the future or of tomorrow. And that's going to look a lot different than traditional warehouses for books. It's going to have a huge community asset, a community gathering place, forum for arts, all of those things, technology education, which is becoming much more important to citizens. And the pandemic has told us that there are a lot of things that we do that in a pandemic we have to do differently, whether it's social distancing or masks or whatever the protocol may be in those situations. But to set up a community center component to that library that would allow for flow-through for vaccinations, flow-through for testing without compromising the people doing the testing or the people that go there to be tested, it would also allow for an emergency voting center if we had an election in the middle of a pandemic, where we could be sure that people could exercise their right to vote without being afraid of being infected. So those are some of the things that are going to be incorporated into the new library. And this architect understands the mission of doing that. And I hope, Commissioner, that answers your question.
It did. I just knew you would do it better than I could, so.
Well, I know.
That's all for me. Thank you.
Commissioner Dance?
I have nothing.
Yeah, I've got two. I just want to make a comment on number 7F. I reached out to, in a conversation with the Burn Center of America, which is, of course, my family's, and we were talking about some of the upcoming things in 4th of July and so forth and all the activity they have. And I mentioned Mr. Tucker coming on board, and I asked if they knew anything about him. They reached out to a Florida counterpart and said he is a phenomenal selection, that we would not be disappointed in him. So I just wanted to share that with you guys. And that's coming from the biggest burn center in the country and the world, actually, when you combine them all together, that really looks and vets these guys. But also 7G, Heidi Petito, I think that's a great choice for the FGUA board. She's very familiar with our Plantation Bay. When I started as a commissioner, and she was just so helpful and so knowledgeable about everything down there and wanting to get it resolved. So I think that's a great choice to put her in that position as well. She's done a phenomenal job as well in her new role, and that's all I want to say.
Commissioner Solomon?
Yeah, just a comment on 7D. I wanted to make sure that I understood when I read the backup and everything. What we're talking about here, again, this is, I guess, the second time we're looking at this, is we have 18 miles of beach, and the Army Corps is going to take care of 2.6 miles of that. My understanding is this kind of study and project is to kind of look at other parts of the beach, other than the Army Corps project, because there's been a lot of talk about what we're doing with Dune Reclamation and all that. So if somebody could just confirm to me that that's true and kind of where this particular study is going to focus.
Fortunately, we have Faith here, and Faith can address that for you much better than I can. She has the details. than I can. She has the details.
Good evening, Faith Alcatib, County Engineer. This is, we are requiring construction engineering inspection for the Dune project. Again, let me repeat, this is just requesting a consulting services to do construction engineering services for the Dunes project, which is related to FDOT funding project, the 2.4 miles. That's what this item is about.
This is or is not part of the Army project?
No, it's not.
That's right. Okay. I just wanted to confirm. Right, so it's, it's the sides of it, kind of? Each side or just the north?
Correct. Yes.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
All right. So, so we've gone through on comments. Anything to actually pull from the agenda? Commissioner Sullivan?
No, nothing.
Commissioner Mullins? Commissioner Hanson?
I have nothing.
And the chair has nothing, so I will entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion to second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries unanimously. Okay, we will move on to general business. And we've already accomplished 8A. 8B is an item entitled approval of Phase One Guaranteed Maximum Price Proposal from Ajax Building Company for the Flagler County Sheriff's District Three Administration, an operations center in the amount of $2,911,742. And I'm not sure, are you going to take care of that, Ms. Holly?
Take care of it.
All right.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Holly Terrence, Purchasing Manager for Flagler County. Tonight, I'm here alongside Ajax Building Company to present the Guaranteed Maximum Price, or GMP, for Phase One of the Flagler County Sheriff Operations and District Three Facility. Phase One is inclusive of all mobilization, site work, aggregate piers, rather, and paving within the 8.4 acre site off of Sheriff E.W. Johnson Boulevard. The timeline for Phase One is estimated at six months at a guaranteed maximum price of $2,911,742. Phase One will be followed by a second and final phase, which is anticipated in September of 2021. Well, anticipated to, for GMP in 2021. The guaranteed maximum price for Phase Two will encumber all the remaining items, including the foundation, structure, finishes, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, fire protection, and landscaping portions of the project. Approval of this GMP tonight will allow staff to issue a contract amendment and notice to proceed to Ajax, who is represented tonight by Lon Newman, who is the project manager for Ajax, if you have any technical questions or concerns.
Commissioner?
Are we on schedule? I noticed we've already hit one milestone. Already, June 14th, we're supposed to have completed negotiations. Have we done that?
Yes, yes.
I like that answer. Good.
And if anybody has any technical questions, this is Lon, and he'll be happy to answer them.
Commissioners, any questions?
Yes, sir.
Pertaining to the schedule, when the original contract was signed back in November, the detailed schedule had construction being completed in November of 2021, and the completion date's now October of 2022. So can you speak to the, from the first time we signed the contract to what's gone into pushing that contract, that completion date out?
My name is Lon Newman with Ajax Building Company. Mainly, there were some things that happened during the design and pricing that delayed completion of the design.
Okay, so now that, but we're on the schedule for October 2022, is?
As soon as we knew when the actual design was going to be complete, from that moment, we haven't altered off of our schedule.
Okay. Who's, who's the county point of contact that's working with Ajax to make sure scheduling is done and, and is?
That'll be Mike Dixon from General Services.
Okay. You've got a construct, a contingency that's included. Is that a, a final number, or will that, depending on, I know material costs are fluctuating, is that a firm number, or will that also be modified if you have astronomical increases in certain products? Or have you secured all the products?
There's a lot of questions there. Is what, the, the, the secured number, the contingency?
Contingency. Is that just for Phase One?
That is just a contingency for Phase One.
Okay.
So it, it will generally be about 3% of what the overall GMP is.
Right.
So in the next GMP, there will be another contingency?
Right. Well, there's a specified amount within the agreement, so I just wanted to make sure that that was a set amount. It won't go above that, even if there are other?
That is correct. The, the contingency amount that we put in the GMP will not increase.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, any other questions, Commissioners? All right, no other questions. I'll open this item up for public comment. Anyone from the public wish to comment on this item?
Mr. Chairman, if there's no one, I did want to make a comment.
I'll, I'm closing public comment. Go ahead, sir.
I, I think that it is incredible that we maintained as much of a schedule as we did with everything shutting down during COVID. And the great news here is that this portion of the contract is coming in exactly on budget, which is a phenomenal thing within itself with all of the increases in runaway price and labor shortages and everything that we have experienced during and post-COVID. So I, I think that procurement and Ajax has done a really magnificent job of bringing this thing in where we had to have it.
Okay. If, if there's nothing else, Commissioners, I would entertain a motion on this.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve item 8B, the Phase One Guaranteed Maximum Price Proposal from Ajax.
Second. Have a motion in the second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, opposed, that motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right, item 8C has been deleted from the agenda, and we'll move on to item 8D, which is a discussion of selection of a interim county administrator. And Mr. Cameron, some comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As I have said all evening, Flagler County is indeed fortunate with the leadership that we have, the core leadership team. We have two people that are ready and could take over any organization this size tomorrow and do a, a great job. We have been in a transition period, and during that transition period, we have discussed with core leadership, and we've discussed with Heidi Petito and Jorge Salinas, and we believe that Jorge was really qualified to take over this on an interim basis. And the closer we got, the more that Jorge believed that he was correctly situated as the number two. He developed a great admiration for the abilities of Heidi Petito. I agree with him that Heidi has a longstanding record of accomplishment here. She has grown up from the ranks. She understands every portion of what we, we do here, and she is willing to step in as the interim administrator for you. My recommendation would be that you would appoint her as a three-month interim until the end of September, which is our budget will be in place. Both Heidi and Jorge are truly familiar and involved with the budgeting process, and I have total confidence. That will give you three months and will give Heidi three months to assess what that position is and what her capabilities are. You would effectively have a three-month interview. At the end of three months, if she were willing to go forward, and you thought that she was the person, you could do that. If not, she has told me that she would stay for whatever period of time was necessary for you to do whatever type of search and recruitment that you thought. So there's really no downside and every upside to the team of Petito and Salinas, and I heartily recommend that you appoint her.
Questions, Commissioners? No, I... Go, you, go ahead.
No, I want to say that I, I agree with what you're saying there. We got two, I mean, you could flip a coin, and either one of them would be phenomenal at that job. Jorge and I certainly have worked a lot on this broadband thing, and we're going to be getting busy, busier doing that. So I think that's a big focus that's going to pull away a little bit. And Heidi, with what I've seen you do over the last few months and, and the presentation that you gave me about the CARES Act, I was really impressed. I, I always knew you could do it, but very impressed with what you were going in there and saying, and how organized it was. It's phenomenal. One thing I do want to say is you guys, you know, we, we need, as a commission, and I think as a group, protect you guys more. We come in here, and some come in here and beat us up once or twice a month. You guys have been given countless emails that are ridiculous, that are absurd, people sending hundreds of them a month, attacking every step you go, and nobody is asked to come in and work under conditions like that. And I, I just want to encourage you not to put up with it, because you're not punching bags for people. You're, this, this stuff needs to stop. And some of these media, wannabe media outlets need to stop with the chaos and the, the churning of ignorant information, is the best way I can say it. And appreciate you guys doing your job, because we got some of the best all throughout this, this staff, and I want y'all to know we're behind you 100%.
Commissioner Sullivan?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I, I think it's a great, a great choice. We had two, two great possibilities. Just for my own personal benefit before I vote, could, could we just have Heidi say just a couple of words about that she's willing to, to go forward with, as you've described it, Mr. Cameron, with, with, with that decision? Because it is a big decision for her, too. And so I just thought maybe we just have a few words along those lines.
Thank you, Commissioner. I was going to ask for the same thing.
It is perhaps a bigger decision for her than it is for you, because county administrators are notoriously short-lived.
Heidi, if he's manipulated you or threatened you, let us know.
Well, thank you. Truly, it's, it's an honor, and I am extremely honored that you guys have the confidence in me to move the organization forward under the direction and the path that Mr. Cameron has set forward. I think that we've got a great team, an extraordinary team, and I look forward to continuing moving the organization in that direction, even if it is on just an interim basis, at the pleasure of the board, and will serve any capacity necessary for Flagler County. So, thank you.
Other comments, questions, Commissioners? Commissioner Dance?
I would just say that there's, there's few that have your institutional knowledge and, and history of the county, so that is definitely going to continue to help us moving forward. To the board, I, I would like to, and, and I, I agree, it's the budget season is, is an important time to stay focused on the tasks at hand. But if we can continue to work in the background to prepare a potential search parameters to take the instance to where at the end of three months, that that's how we go. We're not starting three months down the road, but we can start the planning process now. And even if we don't use it, it's there in our back pocket, ready to go.
No, Mr. Chairman, I, I, I move that we appoint Heidi Petito as our interim county manager for a period of three months and September 30th.
Second. Okay, one, one, well, two things. One, we're, we're going to have to open that up for public comment. But I, I would also just like to make sure it goes without passing that if I'm not mistaken, you would be the first female county administrator in the entire 103-year history of Flagler County?
About that, 103, 102. Who's counting?
So I would be real proud of that.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone wish to comment on this motion?
I know Heidi Petito for, my God, almost 19 years. She has been a marvel in helping with the water fiasco from the day the county purchased in 2013 until Saint Jerry came along and got it out of our hands to FGUA. And I also did forget to say, I wish we would name today, January 21st, Jerry Cameron Day. When I left Ada County, I had a day named after me, and he's a lot better than I am. So I'm shoving that in there with Heidi. Heidi, in charge of General Services Parks, I have never, Mark and I go to a lot of the parks. I've never seen a dirty restroom. I've never seen a restroom without toilet paper. The Adopta Road that Mark and I adopted, we hardly ever have to clean, because Heidi in General Services, that area is to be maintained by Flagler County. And she has done an absolutely wonderful job on everything she touches. She got caught into the Bing's Landing fiasco. That's another issue for another day. I think they should go someplace. But anyway, Heidi has many years behind her, and just talking about her not taking any nasty emails. She's had marvelous emails, most of them complimentary, from everyone I know, including people like Helen Segal in Plantation Bay, who doesn't compliment anyone, ever, but she's complimented Heidi. I hope that Heidi will consider staying, and I hope that Jerry will be around if she ever needs any help. I think she's got the character, the wisdom, the personality. And as Commissioner Dan said, she knows this county better than anybody else. Thank you, Heidi, for accepting this interim appointment, and I hope you stay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Yud. Anyone else wish to comment on this, on the motion? All right, seeing no one come forward, I will call a question. All those in favor of the motion appointing Ms. Heidi Petito interim county administrator effective July the 4th, 2021, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries unanimously. All right, excellent. We also added item 8E to the agenda, and that is, again, it's an interlocal agreement between Flagler County and the City of Palm Coast regarding the marine land acres drainage and roadway improvements project. And Mr. Cameron, you taking this?
I'll take part of it. Attorney Hadeed may, may need to, to chime in at some point. As you know, we were trying to reach an equitable arrangement with the City of Palm Coast on the utility conflicts at marine land acres. And although the state statute would require the City of Palm Coast to 100% resolve those conflicts, the statutes require that, this board, and I agree, have decided that they would like to be more equitable than strictly legal, and have stepped up and agreed to, to pay 700 and 700. $700,000 toward approximately $1,700,000 projected cost on this project. It's essential that it get done. Palm Coast has worked closely with us. This is the document finalizing that agreement and paving the way for Palm Coast to contribute their share and us to begin resolving those utility conflicts.
Mr. Hadeed, anything there?
I'm never opposed to equity, especially when all the parties agree.
Okay. Questions?
Well, just a comment, that's critical to getting this project done. We were, and I appreciate our position on this because you were willing to pay for the whole thing if we had to. And so this agreement is, it's very good, very timely, and we're right in the midst of the project. So, well done, Jerry.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. No other comments or questions, commissioners? Yes, sir. Sorry, I missed that.
I just want to, in my mind, because I, I've been worried about this all along. And the last time anyone from the city was here, the old city manager said there was no money coming from Palm Coast. Does this interlocal agreement force, force a contribution from Palm Coast or does it encourage them to provide funding?
The state statute forces it. This is an agreement that seeks equity and will open the, the road for them to go ahead and make payment to us as we need it on this. But it, it's definite that they are going to be contributing their share. There's no question about that.
Okay.
It is contractual. It's a contractual obligation for them to contribute in accordance with the plan.
The interlocal is contracted?
Yes.
Okay. All right. If there's nothing else, commissioners, I'll open this item up for public comment. Anyone from the public wish to comment on item 8E, the interlocal agreement with the city of Palm Coast? Okay, seeing no one come forward, I'll close public comment.
Mr. Chairman, that also will need to be signed this evening because Palm Coast needs to ratify it tomorrow.
Okay. So...
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the interlocal agreement with Palm Coast.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Commissioner Mullins? Say it louder, I didn't hear you.
Aye.
Aye. Just kidding. Okay, thank you. And none opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Okay. We're good on that one. We'll move to public hearings. The first item is a legislative item and this is the second reading and adoption of an ordinance creating a new planned affordable development section of the land development code and establishing incentives to increase the supply of affordable housing. And who is, who's taking the lead on the presentation on this?
Chuck's got that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Chairman, members of the board, Chuck Miranda, Assistant Growth Management Director, Flagler County.
Yes, sir.
This is the second reading and adoption of an ordinance creating a new planned development, affordable development section. It's actually in two parts. The first part is going to amend Chapter 16 of the county code ordinances. The second part is going to create the planned affordable development, which we refer to as a PAD. This comes after the Planning Board reading on June 8th, 2021, and we had some changes due to that hearing. Also, there was a Affordable Housing Advisory Committee meeting on June 15th, which also had some input. So the changes from the first reading are, we're going to have a, we inserted a provision for the property in order to seek relief of the sales price and rent item limitations, which are in the ordinance section 8C. And also, we included a waiver for the paved road requirement. We added tiny homes and also we added, added the tiny homes to the list of permitted principal uses and structures. And that was the revision, also adding a, the board's review to take place after one year and five years. So the options for the board tonight are either to approve and adopt the ordinance as presented on the second reading, amend and adopt the ordinance on the second reading, or continue the request. So I'm going to give it to the board now.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right, commissioners, we had presentation, we've had documentation in our board package, so I'm going to open up for questions, comments. Commissioner Mullins?
I just, I want to read something real quick and I, I, this was sent, I always, being in multifamily, work really closely with Apartment Association and the state and federal apartment association. This circulated, this has circulated all over the state and it's actually been submitted to NACO, which I serve on the, the Housing and Workforce Development Committee, who are looking at it to present it to, on a federal level. But I want to read something real quick. This came from the Government Affairs Manager at First Coast Apartment Association, Anders Hancock. Dear Commissioner Mullins, I am Anders Hancock and I am the Local Government Affairs Manager for, for the Florida Apartment Association, FAA. Under this role, I serve as the Government Affairs Manager for the First Coast Apartment Association. The First Coast Apartment Association represents apartment owners, operators, and suppliers in the six counties that make up Northeast Florida. As a representative of FCAA, I would like to express our gratitude in your forward thinking on this issue of affordable housing. After speaking with your incredibly informed and articulate staff members within Flagler County, we have concluded that this is a flexible, pragmatic first step in moving towards affordable housing. In the near future, we hope to see encompassing cities take heed and provide development incentives to help combat this affordable housing shortage that increasingly worsens by the day as approximately 1,000 people move to Florida, to the Florida sunshine. If I can ever be of resource on future multifamily and affordable housing issues, always feel free to contact me. FAA has done a research study on drivers of cost of housing that could be useful in the future as you explore ways to address affordability. Thank you, Anders Hancock.
Thank you for sharing that, Commissioner.
Well, we all got that letter.
Yeah, absolutely. I, I think it's good to read it for the public, so that, yeah. Any, anything else, commissioners? Or, you know, for my part, I have followed the process along. We've, we've, I think thoroughly vetted this with our Affordable Housing Task Force, with the Planning Board and staff and the public. So I applaud, I applaud everyone for, for the effort. It's, it's not been taken lightly and I think we've gotten good feedback and made some good changes over time. And I think Commissioner Hanson alluded to it when we first read, read the proposed ordinance that we wanted to make sure that there was oversight and flexibility on the commission's part to be able to look at the incentives and individually customize things as they're brought before us, so.
I was going to comment on that, that they retained that in the rewrite.
Yes, sir. So if there's nothing else, I'll open this item up for, for public comment. Yes, sir.
President Broker Realtor, Jane Yud Realty, licensed since 1979 as an agent, 1986. The letter that you read specifically says in several portions, multifamily. I was brought up in a multifamily affordable housing project. My mother was a single parent. I came out just fine. These were multifamily rentals where everyone had a certain amount of income, you couldn't exceed the income. The community was within walking distance to the supermarkets, to the school. I didn't have a car till I was 25 years old. My mother never drove. What I see here is a mismatch of ownership for people who have limited income. Well, we have FHA, we have, the banks have, and the federal government has specific programs for loans for people who could not afford a big down payment. In this plan, you're giving all the developers who are building whatever they want, you're like creating an enclave, like almost redlining an area way up in the, and it even says that sewer is preferred, but septic's okay. But yet in the Affordable CARES Act, the Affordable, the new act, the American thing, everyone is pushing only for sewer. This is not affordable housing. This is not, if you were going to have a big multifamily housing project, as where I was brought up, that had a cluster of big buildings and parking on the outside, we had 12 playgrounds in the interior of the community. We had basketball, we had tennis. This is something, how are you going to enforce? What kind of zoning is this going to be? A little house next to a big house, next to a trailer, next to this? And five miles? You can't have people five miles from services. And where are you going to put this? Affordable housing, we need multifamily housing. We need housing that's affordable, within limits where people can actually bike or walk to services. The town center area, that's where you put people who need affordable housing and you build one type of housing. The federal government gives big, big incentives to developers. Some of them I'm against, but they give these incentives to the developers. You're letting the developers pay no impact fee, do this. Who's going to enforce what? I think if you do vote for this, mark my words, it will be a total disaster. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to comment on this? Item?
Good evening. Sandra Shank, Chair of the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee for Flagler County. I want to commend Mr. Cameron, Adam, and the entire staff. They did an excellent job with drafting the Affordable Housing Ordinance. It is consistent with the requirements from the Florida Housing Finance Corporation. So some of the concerns that the prior person spoke about, they are addressed in the Florida Housing Finance Corporation's requirements. And for the low-income housing tax credit deals, that's where the developers will actually seek that funding. So she's actually correct about the five-mile radius concern, but again, that's in the funding. So if they seek that type of funding, they'll have to meet those kinds of requirements. I think that we've made significant, significant progress in creating this Affordable Housing Ordinance. And it will serve as a model for the municipalities, not only the municipalities within Flagler County, but I do believe that it could be a model for the entire nation. We do have to have developer incentives and it's not only for multifamily, it's also for first-time homeownership. So I strongly encourage you to vote in favor of the Affordable Housing Ordinance. It is a significant step in the right direction and it will serve as a model for the entire nation. And thank you again to Mr. Cameron, Adam, and the entire staff that worked on it and the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee and the Planning Board. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shank. Next speaker, please. Welcome.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Jan Rieger and I almost can't believe that I am here to be able to finally talk about an Affordable Housing Ordinance. For over 13 years, I've been on a soapbox advocating action for affordable housing. So have a lot of other people, I think maybe yourselves included. I made a prediction in 2008 that my grandchildren would have problems when they were ready to find a home. And I was right. I'm not going to get into those stories, but I will say that I lost a grandchild and a family to another state because they were going to go there and get two to three times the house for the same kind of money that they might have been spending here. Obviously, that makes me very sad. Couple of years ago, I was working with a philanthropic gentleman as a Realtor who wanted to do an affordable housing project. He wasn't a greedy person. I hope I can get back to him and say we can do something. His goal wasn't to make a bunch of money. His goal was to be philanthropic, which is just what he did. But we could not make a sustainable pro forma work with all the fees. And we did try. I, I realize there are some unknowns. There are some suggestions and questions and whatever, but the logistic of how the PAD or PAD will work, but it, it all's going to require approval. All going to be looking at this. And a prospect can request reasonable and viable waivers for some issues that, that might come into play and they can be considered on a, on a case-by-case basis. I want to thank Jerry Cameron for bringing about this ordinance. We've been talking about it for a while. I want to thank Adam Engel, legal staff, and other staff members and all the boards. I watch, that's how we know the Board, Housing Committee, we're talking about. A lot of people who looked at this, considered it, made suggestions. And I think what we have is a very viable and important ordinance. I will be grateful to see a unanimous vote for adoption of this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rieger. Anyone else from the public wish to comment on this item?
Operating with one hand here, thank you. Greg Bloise, President and CEO of the Palm Coast Flagler Regional Chamber. I wanted to share with you that, I've been speaking with Sandra ever since I've got to this community a year ago and quickly realized through my own experience of trying to build and buy a house here that there are significant issues that need to be addressed for Flagler County housing. I think the ordinance that you have in front of you today is a very good ordinance. And so what it does, as you know, you've read it, but what it does is it puts options in front of developers and allows them to choose how they can keep the cost of building that housing down. So it's not exactly a developer giveaway in that we're looking for the development community to tell us what ways can you lower the cost of housing in a, in a way that actually means that people of lower income can afford to, to move into that. So I think this is great. In terms of the, the previous comment about, you know, what this is, you know, my opinion is we have to start somewhere. We've got to do something in Flagler County. The housing prices are out of control. It's only going to get worse, right? I mean, for those of you in the know, we know county's got impact fees coming up. That's not the discussion today, but school board's got impact fees, other people are looking at impact fees. So, you know, I'm really proud of, of Sandra and anybody else that served on that group for, for stepping up and putting together this ordinance. The chamber supports it. I used to run a home builders' association. I don't know if, if they support it, but as a, as a former president and CEO of a home builders' association, I would tell you that this is great for the development community. And in terms of the comment about if we approve this, it's going to be a total disaster, I, I think we're on the borderline of a total disaster already with housing prices. So, so really, I think it's up to all five of you to, you know, really approve this. I would ask that you would approve it tonight. It's important, it's meaningful, and finally, we can say we have done something, right? We're not, we're not standing here just saying, oh, look at the, the cost of housing, it's out of control. We have done something. We've put work into a document that can be meaningful in people's lives. And I think that's, that's really great. The other part, it's reviewed annually, so if there are any concerns moving forward that this didn't work, that's not working, or nobody's taking advantage of it, we can revise it. And I think that's great, too. And final point, 20%, just about 20% of all people that have jobs in Flagler County work in the hotel and restaurant industry. And these are the people that need these housing options. So I think this is great. Mr. Cam- Mr. Cameron, congratulations to you and your staff. I urge you to approve it today, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Blasey. Anyone else from the public wish to comment on this? Welcome, Commissioner.
Good evening, the Chair and Commissioners. I was also was reading the proposal that the Housing Authority Board made, and my concern is, I'm dazed hearing, I'm sorry. I live in 503 East Drain Street. I was amazed at the work that they had put into it. I love it, but like I said, the last affordable home that would be available, Lou Warwood, Bill Hyman Circle in Bonnell, and a lot of those homes were affordable for a lot of his workers at that time. And just like you were about stating, there is a need because you do have people in public housing has already maxed out their limit for paying rent, and the rent that they pay could be towards their homeownership. And I was concerned about the five miles, too, because a lot of time people don't drive. But then also I read, too, that it'd have to be somewhere where they can come to some kind of provision, like stores or whatever, hospital, and so that was some concern of mine, but I agree with so far everybody. This is a great proposal, but it's got some little kinks, but it's a start, and I think that, you know, with the board and people's coming on board, that it can be worked out, that would suit a win-win for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Henry.
Good evening. Again, my name is Nealan Joseph. I work for Flagler County. I'm coming forward as a resident of Bonnell. I've been appointed to both Bonnell City and Planning Zoning Appeals Board and the county's Affordable Advisory Housing Committee. Last week, I shared some information with the Bonnell City Commission concerning affordable housing. Study conducted by Florida's Preeminent Study Political, Student Political Journal found that 89% of extremely low-income households are classified as what we deem classified as cost burdened, which means 30% or more of their income goes towards housing. 79% are considered severely cost burdening, meaning that more than half of their income goes towards housing. Even as a resident and employee of Flagler County, if it wasn't for the VA and my compensation through here, I would spend a significant portion of my paycheck just to have affordable housing. I think it's very important for us to pass this ordinance. We have spent a significant amount of time working on this, over a year and a half, and back and forth between the advisory committee and the commission trying to get this right. And I think what we have on the table is something that everyone else across the state of Florida, and in fact, across the nation, is going to emulate. We have the opportunity to spring light years ahead of where everyone else is standing for affordable housing, and it gives us the choice to work with developers to actually reduce the costs and get people who actually need affordable housing into affordable housing, not just rentals, and we're working out to get people to actually buy housing, to afford what they can, and work with them. I think that this is so important that if we were to deny this, if we were not to accept this, we would come into a serious problem going forward, and the county is already in a serious problem. That's just across the northern, Flagler County, Volusia County, Orange County, Osceola County, the state of Florida. Everyone is seeing the same effects right now. So I really implore you to please take the advice and the work that we have done over the last year and a half of working on this ordinance and to actually accept it.
Thank you, Nealan. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one else come forward, we'll close the public comment, and I know Commissioners, a couple of you chimed in, so Commissioner Dance?
Yeah, thanks. In my conversations with the public on this, it's, I think the two concerning overriding positive thoughts are that it's a first step. I think we all realize that we've got this on paper and we're ready to put this into play. And the second one is the automatic one-year renewal, and everybody is on board with, you know, seeing how this progresses and what comes in and what they look like and being able to tweak it in a year. It's a mandatory review, and that's a positive.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Mullins, you?
Just, I just wanted to make a comment to the statement that we're giving developers a something for nothing. Developers are taking a massive loss in profit by building these and doing the restrictions that they are. Right now, most of the people that come in here with intentions to build workforce housing without any regulation on it immediately go, the cost per square foot to build luxury housing is just probably $10, $20 more a square foot, but yet I can sell it for $200 and $300 a square foot. And we're talking, the developer is taking a massive loss by doing this and following the codes, and then a long-term owner would certainly make more by keeping these normal housing or luxury housing because they can have higher rents. So, you know, right now, there's properties selling for two, three condos, selling for $200, $300 a square foot, and there's no way we can keep up this market and keep housing the important jobs that we need here to house. I also want to state that there has been no developer that's come in town that I know of. It wasn't of last week, so I don't know that anybody's popped in that has come in, identified any property out on the west, and the east, the south, the north, any part of Flagler to do any kind of housing. There's also, if you're going to do multifamily and you're going to do housing, cluster housing like that, there's no way an apartment complex of 200 people can use a septic system, a septic tank. There's no way. They would flood it and just everybody, you can't dictate when everybody's going to take a shower, and usually it's going to be around the same time. So they would flood that system, so it has to be into county sewer or city sewer or whoever's going to provide the sewer if they're going to do any kind of large development of housing. The, also the same thing with the water. You can't have a well, an exhausted well, that's barely getting by housing 100, 200 people in a unit, a complex, and all running at the same time, which most people usually get up around the same times. So there's a lot of things that have to be worked out. This is a great start. It encourages a developer to not look so much at coming to Flagler, making a massive profit, but to come to Flagler and help us meet the needs of our community. And it's the same thing with hospitals. We don't want them just to come here and make passive money. We want them to meet our needs of the community, and this is doing it for the housing part.
Okay, Commissioners, if there's no other discussion, I'll entertain a motion on this item.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the ordinance creating a new planned affordable development section of our land development code and establishing incentives to increase the supply of affordable housing.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries unanimously. Thank you, everyone, for the hard work. Okay, next up is item 9B, and this is a quasi-judicial matter. This is application number 3251, request for special use in the conservation and PUD districts. The parcel number is delineated, and since it's a quasi-judicial matter, we need to disclose any ex parte communications. Commissioner Dance?
Yes, sir. I had none, sir.
None.
None.
And the Chair has none, so back to you, sir.
Thank you. Chuck Morando, Assistant Growth Management Director, Flagler County, Chairman, Members of the Board. This is a request for special use in the Hunter's Ridge DRI Development of Regional Impact, which is on the almost 2,000 acres that were granted by the developer to the county. Most of it is conservation area, a little portion is PUD. And the request is from the City of Ormond Beach to establish water wells, raw water wells, in that area to supply not only the residents of Flagler County, but also a portion of Ormond Beach. And the City of Ormond Beach, they are the utility providers for Hunter's Ridge, and they will be for the rest of it. And there's some environmental permitting that has to happen, and most of it is through the water management. We have Tim Telfer here for any of those questions. We also have the representatives from the City of Ormond Beach for other questions. So it is a long staff report, and went through staff, and went through the planning board for recommendation. So tonight, you can either approve the request, submit it, approve with conditions, or disapprove. There's also issues with finding the sufficient factual data to approve it. So I'm sure everybody's read that and knows what that would be. So if there's any questions, like I said, I'm here, Tim Telfer is here, and the City of Ormond Beach is here.
We definitely have some questions. Mr. Cameron, you chimed in first, and then Commissioner Hanson.
Yeah, I would just like to say that by approving this, it leaves the City of Ormond Beach with a lot of regulatory hurdles, and the fact that you approve this out front will show support of that. I think it's critical to help them to find other water sources because we've got a large expansion of Hunter's Ridge coming before you shortly, and eyes are beginning to turn toward the southern part of the county. This is a long way away from the FGUA facility up on Old Dixie, and it's imperative that we seek to provide quality water in advance before we end up into a suboptimal situation. Secondly, I have enjoyed a tremendous relationship, thus Flagler County has enjoyed a tremendous relationship with Ormond Beach. There are many things that we will be working with them on in the future, which is the US-1 corridor, both on their side and our side, for involving them in how that plays out so that we don't end up with a scenario like the areas south of 95 on US-1 all the way into Daytona. Both jurisdictions would like to avoid that. Keeping that wonderful relationship going is going to be central to doing that, so I would highly encourage permitting them to go forward with the regulatory challenges.
Commissioner Hanson?
Yeah, two points. So, one, if we don't approve this, the project's dead. We're the first step in this project, and you correctly stated, Ormond's got a long road to hoe, a long road to hoe here, but we must approve this to just start the ball down the road, or they're not going to get anywhere. The second thing, I thought the planning board did a great job analyzing this, and I agree with the conditions that they put in there. I think they were all valid. I think they're covered by what Ormond has to do anyway with the rules under the St. John's Water Authority. But I thought that, kudos to the planning board, I thought they did a real good job of setting out some conditions, and I think that we should adopt this, approve this with those conditions. Thank you.
Commissioner, anything else, Commissioners? All right, we'll open this one up for public comment. Anyone from the public wish to comment on this item 9B? Yes, ma'am. No, now it would be great. Thank you.
First of all, we'd like to thank you very much for considering this item. As you said, the city has--
Have to identify yourself with the clerk, sorry.
I'm sorry. Joyce Shanahan, City Manager, City of Ormond Beach. The city currently provides water service and wastewater collection to the southern portion of Flagler County, and through our interlocal agreement, we will do so well into the future. The city has planned and designed and have included in their five-year capital plans improvements that will further enhance service within Flagler County, including the looped two, a looped water main and wastewater force mains along Airport Road. As Mr. Cameron so adequately described, we're also in the process of installing a duplicate water main along US-1 and a force main to help provide the quality of water in that north US-1 corridor. At one point in time, there was an interest from Flagler to join into that main, and so that will help us do that in the future. We want to thank County Manager Jerry Cameron. He's been exceptional to work with. We have a great, wonderful relationship. I'm sorry to see him go, but I'm sure Heidi will be doing a great job in his absence. And also, County Attorney Mr. Hadid has been very helpful, likewise has Adam, so we appreciate that, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have tonight. We do understand that we have a long road to hoe, and we're clearly aware of the stipulations in your planning board's conditions.
Any questions for Ms. Shanahan?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Shanahan, very much. All right. Anyone else from the public wish to comment on this item? See, when no one approached the podium, we'll close public comment and entertain a motion, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I think, I move we approve this application, number 3251, with the conditions specified by our planning board.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is that clean enough, Mr. Attorney?
I think it'd be much better if you said with the conditions specified in the staff report presented to you rather than referring to another unit.
Would you like to amend that motion?
I will amend that motion. Now, Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the application 3251 for special use and to include the conditions specified in the staff report to us.
Well, the second--
Second stands.
Okay. Second stands with his amended motion. Okay, thank you, just clarifying. All right, we have the motion and the second. We've had public comment. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries unanimously. Thank you, everyone. We will move on to item 10 on the agenda. First up is County Administrator Reports, Comments.
Thank you, sir. We have once again been notified that we will receive the budget award this year, and that is something that has been going on for multiple years, but this year, we were uniquely positioned to get it because of the great job that the Finance Department has done. I do want to share with you, this is the last meeting, that our mental health facility, which is going to be named Flagler Access Care Center, is becoming rapidly a reality. We have leveraged those dollars that we are putting in from the state and from the rescue funds to get a really good result. We have a partnership with SMA, Flagler Health Plus, and Phoenix Community Services that are coming together with the county to give us a really first-class facility. Flagler Health Plus has pledged $150,000 to go with the funding that we have. SMA has pledged $150,000. Flagler Health has pledged telemedicine for those folks that need bed management. They have pledged a robust referral services and access to their Care Connect system. SMA is going to be doing a lot of the staffing for the center, which we will have open full time every day. I don't know that we got the weekend schedule, but every weekday, we are going to be open with that, and Phoenix Community Service or the Phoenix Group that you see on the pro forma logo that is now on your screen, is going to be providing some mental health services as well as the services of primary care for folks that will qualify for that out of that center. We will be using our general services-- We will be using our general services to remodel and customize the facility, which will be at the old Benell Library Building. And we are temporarily relocating the library until their permanent building is finished here in order to make this ideally-located facility available to them. Not only is it ideally-located, it's the ideal size and configuration for what we need to do. This is a big day for Flagler County. I worked in St. John's County for almost 10 years to get these results. And I've heard people coming here time and time again in this two-year period pleading for facilities such as this. And as of this date, we are assured that we will have a really good facility here in Flagler County. It's going to have robust referral services, which Flagler Hospital and SMA is going to help us with. So that opens us up to some services that were previously not available. So it's a good day for Flagler County. Did want to talk to you, too, about the progress on Whispering Meadows, which is another really important facility for the therapy that they do. We have sought resolutions to the land use issue. We've found what we believe is an ideal location, that it's located to the west of the fairgrounds on some property that the state has made available on a long-term lease to Flagler County. It would take, in order to do a sublease there, it would take probably a year's worth of approval process, things that we needed to do, we're advised. But we have an interim solution. We can just form a partnership with Whispering Meadows and run it as a public-private partnership and seek a long-term lease if we think that will be a better solution. But I think the public-private partnership will work out well. And I think we're very near a solution on that. County Attorney agrees with me, I think, with that. Mosquito Control update. There's real progress there. The mosquito control is coming to you with a plan in July to provide across the county on a phased-in method, a plan to provide mosquito control to all of those that want it within the county. And they are taking a very responsible position. They're doing community surveys. They're working through our extension services to identify apiaries and to identify organic farming and folks that might not want mosquito control sprays. They're going to do that to make sure that we aren't imposing a district on someone that doesn't want it. So that is, that's important. Faith has asked me to get her the permission to step forward on seeking grants. She's got a grant that she has been applying for for some time, or positioning to apply for from the USDOT to replace four bridges on the west side of the county, which are in need of replacement. And that is, they already received a $1.5 million grant for the design phase, which has been completed. The replacement of those bridges will amount to another $16 million. And she is asking permission under our policies to move forward with applying for that grant from USDOT. And she has also just became aware of this week, or last week, was that under the rebuild of Florida through the Department of Economic Development, the state DOE, another grant, a possibility of a grant to repair those bridges. So she would like to simultaneously apply for that. And she has a third one that she's been working on with the city of Benell for some time. And she wants to apply for the state funding to complete Commerce Parkway to connect 100 to US-1, running directly beside the new sheriff's operation and the new library. So she would like just a consensus for her to move forward with those grants.
Go for it. Yep. Absolutely.
So she has consensus with that. And just to finish up, having some time to reflect on this evening, which is an important evening for me. It has been truly a privilege for me to be associated with people that have such genuine interest in their community. The, this board. Although, you know, the accolades that I received here tonight are appreciated. And you can't help but be humbled by that. But really, what has accomplished all of this huge list of things where we have accomplished so much, it's not me. The actions of this board, the empowering of the ability to create a robust leadership, the keeping the financial situation of the county first and foremost, and you allowing it to go from a terrible situation that we could have been facing tremendous consequences with if we'd had one misstep, to where it is robust and financially situated better than probably 90% of the counties in Florida. Without the guidance and the direction coming from this board, you are the ones that make the policy. You're the ones that are directly answerable to the public. And, you know, do we have some drama occasionally? Absolutely. There is not a political body in the whole United States that doesn't have drama occasionally. It's part of the political process. Do we have disagreements? Sure, I've had disagreements with commissioners. But, you know, when there are three of you that decide on direction, it is my job to forget any disagreement. But to carry that out is most effectively and efficiently. But when you talk about the staff and rising up in all of these situations that we faced and doing what was necessary to put us on the front edge of everything associated with COVID, whether it was Jonathan's operation or whether it was the TDC taking over grant administration or whether it was Social Services taking over individual grants. It's those guys that put it on the line and got things done. And I'm just pleased to be associated with this board and the staff that I've been associated with. I've never seen anyone get as many awards in a short period of time as this county has gotten. And I didn't apply for a single one of them. You know, I didn't do anything to get one of them. This was done by your staff and your policies. I've never seen such individual growth. I've never seen people go from adversarial to true team members that will defend each other in such a short period of time. Your team has created a huge cultural shift. And I will tell you that Lucy Dance and Rose Kirman have made me look a whole lot better than I am. They are incredible women. And they are concerned with this county and they do what's necessary to take the county forward. Gentlemen, you have a terribly bright future here. And if you will keep up what you have been doing for the last two years, staff will respond and you will be one of the best counties in all of Florida. I thank you for the privilege of having been here. Thank you very much.
Does that conclude your report, Mr. Cameron? What happened to short timer's attitude?
I have told you a number of times that I have a personal philosophy of always crossing the finish line wide open.
Yes, sir, you have. Okay, well, thank you. I think we'll have some things to say, but we'll move on to Mr. Hadid's report first.
One other thing.
Yeah.
You have two employees. I'm one. Al's the other. And I have had a tremendous working relationship with Al. He's an attorney that stays in his lane. I've got a lot of attorneys out there that are kind of closet administrators. They drift over into management. But Al has kept that to a bare minimum. And I, he is a tremendous repository of information when I need it. He is, I think he's miscast. He ought to have been a history professor. Thank you.
My exciting County Attorney Report. Well, let me just say, this is a bittersweet moment. Working with Jerry has been truly an honor and an adventure, I have to tell you. I've never had a non-lawyer challenge me so much when I would come up with legal strategies or legal theories. He would really put me to the test. And one of the advantages of that relationship is that we always ended up at a more effective point, the give and take, and not carrying our views personally and resolving to take a particular course, settling on it, and then pursuing it with vigor. But also, and this is a very important characteristic of Jerry's managerial personality. And I'm sure this is what, I'm sure he teaches this. I haven't been to any of his classes. Very adaptable, very flexible to deal with situations that arise or adjustments that are necessary to achieve the objective. It is a bittersweet moment that I won't be able to roust around with him about legal theories and legal strategies. I really enjoyed it. Okay, as to the, as to our work, of course, we're working on all the pending cases we have, and I'm not going to go through those. There's nothing materially different in any of them. I will give you an update, though, on the beach renourishment project, the Army Corps project, which is moving along. You remember at the last meeting, you authorized me to pursue eminent domain against one of the owners in the South 2700 block who'd been particularly challenging for us. And that action led to some communication with that owner, where he has now provided us some working conditions on being able to secure his easement, which we believe we can meet. So we're in the process of doing that. That is in conjunction with another owner of the South 2700 block, actually prospective owner. I think I did advise you before that he is getting ready to close on the property and he will sign an easement. With respect to the other two remaining owners, we have offers outstanding. The latest development with the owner that we addressed at the last meeting, I believe it will make a difference with respect to the other outstanding owners. The kinds of issues he has raised and how we're going to be able to resolve them will go a long way toward achieving resolution with the owners. Can't guarantee it, but I believe we have some light at the end of that tunnel. I'm hopeful that by the next meeting, I can report one or more easements having been executed that are outstanding and others that would be, if not then signed, in process. Doesn't mean we won't have to do a suit. But as you know, that is my objective, not to have to litigate before the court and obtain an eminent domain order. So I think that's a very positive development. I'm very appreciative of that owner that we addressed last meeting coming forward with a very specific, clear pathway to achieving his easement. I also wanted to add, you may have noticed, I'm sure you know that working on the beach is a very dynamic process. We're not static. We're not waiting for the various details to close. You notice, I know you've been made aware that FDOT is doing more shoring up of the beachfront in the South 12th to South 1600 block in advance of the project. And we're very pleased that they've gone ahead and undertaken that work. I also wanted to let you know, we've mentioned it before, teaming with the city of Flagler Beach in securing the annual maintenance agreement to cover the beaches in Flagler Beach with these projects after these projects are completed. So we are starting down that pathway of that agreement with the city of Flagler Beach and FDOT. We're not going to be a signatory to the agreement. Flagler Beach will. But we are actively assisting them in that process. That'll be a $500,000 a year grant to allow repairs coming as a result of a nor'easter or some loss of sand until we re-nourish or until we have a declared event. So that's all on that, unless you have any questions or on any other of the cases that we're handling.
Not seeing any other questions?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hadid. Okay, so that gets us to item 10C, which is our second community outreach portion of the agenda. And again, this is a 30-minute time period allocated for public comment on items not on the agenda. Each speaker will be allowed up to three minutes to address the commission. So please come forward, identify yourselves, and direct comments to the chair. The second community outreach portion is now open.
Again, until you'd first, again, I would like to thank Jerry and staff for everything. I am not here asking anything for myself or my community whatsoever. The American Rescue Plan Act, I realize that Jerry and Heidi and Orey, going through transition, everyone was very busy. What was presented to you, Jerry sent me all the facts on this plan. I would like you to reconsider and hold a workshop, a public workshop, and Jonathan Lord, who is here, can attest that what I'm telling you is totally legal. You don't have a final vote. You can open this up for a workshop, a public workshop. The reasons being that there are many small businesses who didn't even know about the CARES Act, small business loans. I didn't even know about it, and I'm here every other day. The nail salon I go to, when Jerry so kindly sent me everything, I called her up and I said, "Section 603D," I've got it memorized, "has money available for small businesses." Then in speaking with Heidi and Jonathan, it was like they brought in front of you what was planned, and I don't think you're aware that some money allocating three and a half million dollars for sewers, and you're just talking about people who need housing, this fund also allows money to go to individuals. Nothing for me personally, if you have any questions, Jonathan and Heidi can both confirm to you that you will not lose a dime. If you reopen this, it's $22 million, to a public workshop for people who have no idea, including you commissioners yourselves, probably don't know about all the things that are allowed in this package. Jonathan has assured me you will not lose a dime, and I ask you, not for me, but for the small businesses and some of the individuals who desperately need help, to please open a public workshop and possibly review some of the items. Not a dime for me, for those who were left out the first go-around, to me is far more important than some of the way the money was aligned. I know it was very difficult the first time, but you had someone in charge of tourism doing the applications. I volunteer my time for free to help Heidi and staff do whatever questions are necessary to the businesses and individuals to help qualify them for some loans. It isn't for me, it's for these people who deserve something, and please ask Jonathan, the funding will not, you will not lose a dime if you have a workshop and reopen this for other people. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hude. Anyone else for community outreach? Okay, so you know one approached the podium, we'll close the second community outreach portion, and we'll finish up here with commission reports, comments, reactions. Commissioner Sullivan?
Well, I think tonight is, in addition to the staff, and we all understand that all these things that were done during our current county administrator's tenure here, which was not that long, a little over two years, but it's his night tonight, he's the one leaving. And I love to go back in history and remember movies and things like this, so I can't help thinking, if you all remember the movie with Bing Crosby called Going My Way, does anybody remember that movie where you had a priest come into town because one of the Catholic parishes there was having a terrible time, and they were going to fail, they were going to lose their building, and all that? And so Barry Fitzgerald was the old Catholic priest who was having a hard time, so here comes Father O'Malley, Bing Crosby, and he comes in and in a short period of time comes in and fixes things and gets everything back on the right track. And I think in the final scene, when Father O'Malley now has to leave and go someplace else, he says, "And sister, don't remember, don't remember this, in the future, just dial O for O'Malley if you got a problem." So I'm saying tonight that I'll use the first name, just dial J for Jerry in the future. We appreciate all you've done here. Thank you.
I'm going to do the same, I'm going to kind of stay away from any other comments and just really mention what it's been the last few years. I do appreciate the endorsement you just gave. I'm going to get the minutes from Jared and make sure that I put that on a very good mail-out saying, "Best commission ever." But, you know, when we met, Jerry, you told me you never left a job where they didn't want you to stay longer, and I looked at you and said, "There's no way. No hillbilly from South Carolina is going to stay, be begged to stay there. A Georgia one, yes, but not one from South Carolina." And you know what? It's true. It's true. It's hard to believe that this time has come. I dreaded it when you told me, and I did not want this to occur, and a lot of it is, you know, I've been through a lot the last twelve months, and I couldn't have made it through losing my brother without being replaced with someone like you. You've been a role model, you've been, you've talked me off many different ledges, and you've put up with a lot, and you've helped me grow as a person, and more than anything, you've helped me grow as a father and a husband, and I really appreciate that. You've given me some really good direction, and I know my wife loves you dearly, loves Daphne, and I don't feel like I'm losing a manager today. I feel like I'm shifting a relationship with a really good friend that I'm going to be able to do a lot more things with, and I just really appreciate the spiritual part that you've given me. You've helped me reconnect to God, you've helped me see that I need to be a better, stronger person, and you have stood by principles that I cherish and value and respect a hundred percent. Thank you.
Commissioner Anderson?
Not much I can add, Jerry. You've been a great, great friend and a great leader here. The one thing you've done that we haven't talked about is you've set the stage for us to replenish our beaches. You've got us headed in the right direction to get that done with faith and the rest of the staff, and we're working pretty hard to get that accomplished. And it's going to take a lot, probably three to five years to get it done, but you started us on the right path, and that's greatly appreciated. So all the best to you. Fair winds, following seas.
A few things. I know I'm the short timer, we didn't get to spend a lot of time together, but Jerry did get me to start reading again. Really, I have all these wonderful books on the bookshelf that I never really cracked open, have accumulated over the years, but there's a renewed enthusiasm for reading, so thank you, sir. It only took us about eight months to get to an understanding of each other, and then you leave. You know, we kind of acknowledged our different paths and now have come to that understanding of where each of us comes from when we approach the issues, and, but that's part of growth and understanding other points of view, so those I'll take with me as well. And I think you've left a really impressive legacy for the rest of us to continue the leadership program, and I think the financial issues of checking off the list and getting some of those problematic issues that are behind us, I want to see us start focusing on that vision, what Flagler County's future vision is, now that we've got some of those issues, a majority of those issues behind us, it's now time to look at the future and plan for the future. So I think you've laid that groundwork, and now we got to take a hold of it and run, so thank you.
I think back on the beginning of 2019 and think about the most, the incredible stress that I felt, probably in my adult life, one of the most stressful times that I've ever had, and, you know, it was self-inflicted because I was part of the group that voted for a change in administration, and I don't apologize about that, but I can tell you, the last thing that I wanted to do was to be attending staff meetings, because I knew that's not my place. You know, my place as a commissioner is not there, it's not on administration, it's not on running the day-to-day business of the county. But for a month or so, I had to do that, and I was, you know, I quickly understood what good folks we had in leadership on the county staff, and it's just grown over time. But I thank God for the day that Commissioner Sullivan, you know, identified you as one of our candidates as interim, and I'm sure glad the way it's worked out, and, you know, I can tell you, I feel in a much different place today as we're making this transition. Again, you know, two and a half years ago, or whatever the timeframe was, I was under severe stress, but I don't feel that way today, I feel very calm, and appreciate that, and I value our friendship.
Thank you, and I value the friendship of each one of you, and it's just been, what a way to finish up a career. But I neglected to say, the person that's really sacrificed wasn't me, it's my wife. She's the one that gave up weekends, gave up evenings, and I was so decision-fatigued about the nights, I'd go home, she'd say, "What would you like for dinner?" I said, "Please don't make me make a decision, just put something in front of me." She's been an incredible woman, there's no way that I could have made it through all parts of my career, but particularly with this one, this one was demanding, and God was very kind to me when he sent her to me. Thank you.
All right, with that, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Move, we adjourn?